Don't give up your day job.
Elena, are we ready?
I can't wait.
Good? Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council chambers. We have quite a few scouts in the room. If you would all like to come up to the podium and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Start whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, guys.
All right, let's, let us take a moment of silence to reflect on what we have before us. All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. It is Monday, May 17th at approximately 6:30 PM. We have all members of council present. The first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. What's the pleasure of council?
Who do approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and the next item is public comment. I have three requests to speak forms. The first one is from a Mr. John Thornton. And please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Absolutely. I have a couple folks joining. I'm John Thornton. I'm the president of the Oviedo High School Athletic Boosters Club. And we just wanted to speak on behalf of supporting flying the high school flags of Oviedo and Hagerty at, at City Hall if that's a possibility. We think that the support for the, the two schools that we have in town and the unique, the, the unique community feel that we have here for our schools would be a nice gesture. And it's not just for the athletics, it's for all the programs. It would be just the logo of the schools. So it kind of helps support everything that, every student in, in both schools. And I have a couple of students that would like to also speak on behalf of that as well.
Great. Just state your name for the, the record, please.
Hi, I'm Bryce Lesser. I'm on the Oviedo Varsity Football Team at Oviedo High School. I'm going to be a junior next year. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. So one of the best parts of living in Oviedo is the sense of community and the support that we show one another every day. I've always felt the support as being on the varsity football team at Oviedo High School through team meal donations, post-workout snack donations, and especially free pop schools after practice. Okay, so mostly through food, but seriously, we have two of the best high schools in the state right here in Oviedo. And every Friday night in the fall, it seems the whole town comes together to support either Oviedo or Hagerty. It would be an awesome extension of that support and community spirit to fly the flags at City Hall. I know that personally, as a student athlete at Oviedo High School, it would be motivating to see the city fly the OHS flag in support of our great school and our talented athletes. And I think it would be greatly appreciated by the community as well. Thank you for considering this request and go Lions.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Isabel Shaw and I play for volleyball at Oviedo High School. Thank you for the opportunity to share my view on flying both an Oviedo High School and Hagerty High School flag at City Hall. As I wrap up my freshman year, I will tell you that I really did not know what to expect moving into high school. Throw COVID into the mix and let's just say my expectations of having, having an amazing experience were very low. Thankfully, I cannot have been more wrong. The support of the administration, staff, parents, and our community blew me away. Of course, we felt the love on campus, but it extended out to business owners, their employees, and members of our community. I proudly wore my OHS spirit wear on a daily basis and was amazed at how many strangers would say good luck at your game and go Lions. Historically, the support for our local high school runs deep. Just this year, a year of COVID, our Athletic Boosters raised, raised over $70,000 for more than 50 local businesses. And that is just athletics. There's so much more from our schools to be proud of. PTSA, national and state grants, recognition of our amazing administration and staff from a state level, all for the city of Oviedo. Displaying our flag show that our community leaders support its residents and business owners, and more importantly, the continued success of our city for future generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the, the next request to speak form I have is from Mr. Jay Getty.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jay Getty, 322 Crystal Circle. As a former Oviedo High School Athletic Director and current Athletic Director at Hagerty High School, I have spent 30 years of my career in one town, this one. And the ability to support our teams as a show of unifying symbolism for this community would be an outstanding piece for this council to be a part of. There are a couple of scenarios I would like to throw at you as a possible solution for what may become a mammoth undertaking. We have three to four home events per week on a regular basis. So if you're going to attempt to fly the flags every time one of us has a home game, it may never come off the poles. So my suggestion would be, since both of these schools represent this community so well, is that every time we compete against each other, that both of those flags be on the pole. The flag at the top would represent the home team. This way, with separate flags, you would also be able to showcase those two schools during the FHSA State Series, which is also known as the playoffs, so that now you've expanded outside of the regular sports seasons to fully encompass what our two schools do. Represent the town, produce outstanding academic student athletes that win state championships every single year. And I cannot think of a better way to support those programs than for us to be a part of that flagpole and show the town that it really is, while it listed as two schools, it's one big educational system producing winners. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. All right, the last request to speak form is from Mr. David Williamson.
Good evening. David Williamson, address is P.O. Box 621123, Oviedo. I'm here on behalf of the Central Florida Freethought Community. A few weeks ago, our organization committed to putting the U.S. Constitution in the hands of every person that serves in the Oviedo City Council. So I'd like to present a copy of the people's word today to you. And as I present it to you, our hope is that you read it and it gives you wisdom to help lead us here in the city in the way our city has been led so well in times past.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to address council at this time? Okay, hearing none. I'll close public comment. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. What's the pleasure of council?
Who do approve?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a unified second. I'll leave that to you, Madam Clerk, to decide who that second came from. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, there's no public hearings, no first readings, no resolutions, and we're on to discussion items. So only one discussion item and it's flags being displayed at city facilities. Madam Mayor, you brought this, this brought, brought this up as a discussion item. You want to take it from there?
It sounds like we've got a lot of community support for this. We have two amazing schools that, that serve our town, the public schools, and then we have a lot of other schools in the mix as well. I think there's been a lot of show of support from our, our two public schools, Oviedo and Hagerty. And I, I like Coach Getty's idea of figuring out a way to just focus, hone in, until we get to championship season, hone in on when are, are these teams playing each other. And that would make it, I think, a very manageable task. So I'd love to see it happen. I really, I really think it would be a great thing for Oviedo.
Who would like to go first?
I just have a few questions. I assume we have one flagpole to use for this? Brian?
Well, we have two flag, we have two flagpoles out front.
One's got the American flag.
One's got the American flag, the other has the state flag. We normally, like with our current policy, we remove the state flag and replace it with the UCF flag on the Friday before a football game.
I'm not sure what the protocol is, but can we hang more than one flag on a flagpole?
We've been trying to research that. When you have, we do know for certain, when you have a single pole, that you may fly a flag underneath the American flag. But when you have multiple poles, you have the American flag on one pole and then the other flags, the subordinate flags are to the left. So we, we feel like we could, on the subordinate pole, could fly multiple flags, but we, we don't, we haven't found anything that says that we can fly multiple flags on the, on the, with the United States flag.
Okay, that, that makes sense. You know, it just, this, this started with the, the partnership we have with UCF because we're trying to build a relationship with them and we fly their flags during the football games. I don't see any problem with flying four or five flags on, on one pole if we can pull it off. And I think UCF only puts their flags up, or we put them up there on Saturdays during their game?
We, we put them up on Fridays before the football games. And then we also have recently, there's another clause in the resolution that says at the request of the Athletic Department. And so they had a very successful winter and spring season and had multiple sports getting into national tournaments. And so we were, they would advise us when they made it into the championship games and we'd fly the flag then for them.
Okay, so how tall is this flag? 30 feet?
Five feet, right?
Well, the, the flag size is five, five feet by eight feet. Oh, the pole? Pole's probably, probably maybe 30 feet, maybe.
So we can fit a bunch of five-foot flags on one pole, I think. So, you know, let's knock ourselves out and go do it. I don't, I don't know why we'd need a, a formal policy, but if we need one, I guess we'll, we can get one.
This will force us to fly the flag at full mast. Thank you to all of the scouts who helped get all of our flags to the tippy-top of those poles before the meeting started. Appreciate y'all.
That's all I had, Bob. I just wanted to see, you know, I think this is a, a no-brainer. It shouldn't be hard to figure out.
No, I liked Mr. Getty's idea of flying it when they had the, the two teams face each other and then have the home team on the top. I thought it was a good idea. I guess the only question I would have then is, are we saying that the UCF flag would then be underneath the two high school flags on, on those Fridays when they do football? Because the other option that was in the, and, and here was about buying another flagpole, but... So what do you do with the UCF flag then?
We could put three on there, right?
I think you could put five or six flags on one pole. Doesn't matter what order they're in to me.
Well, if it's a 30-foot pole and they're fly, they're five feet tall, you're, you're, you've got one of them sitting at the ground.
Once at half-mast. Well, we've been flying our Florida flag at half-mast routinely, so...
We'll get them all half and higher.
So I, I had a discussion with Mr. Cobb about this earlier today. And one solution could also be to continually fly both flags inside on flagpoles similar to this, right inside the, the City Hall. So when people walk in, they'll see the flags. I mean, that's another, and then that shows the support of, of the city for the, for the high schools. And then we'll, you know, we'll continue to do what we do with the, the UCF flag outside and possibly swap them up if we, if, you know, on a day when both teams play each other. But, or both schools, sorry, play each other. That's just a thought as well. We will have to, I think we'll have to amend the resolution or create a resolution for this because currently, the, the current resolution states that it was for UCF football on, I think it was like 24 hours before game day or something like that, so... I'm, I'm sorry. Councilmember Smith, did you have, did you want to add?
Are we going to clarify it before we, or are we going to leave that to Mr. Cobb?
I, I will seek your clarification.
So I, you know, I mean, that, those are, those are just some suggestions. I don't know where we want to, you know, what we want to do and how we want to handle it from there, but...
Who's responsible for hanging the flags?
Our facilities.
Mr., Mr.?
Mr. Bullware's department, yes.
Can he offer some input or some, is that okay?
Yes, if they, if he can hear us. Yes, the, the building.
So they're, they're sitting in a room over there watching the YouTube version, so there's like a one-minute delay. So he heard the question and then he'll hear it later and then come over. So that, that's what we're waiting on. And Mr. Bullware is our director of the Recreation and Parks Department. So, and, and also like all the facilities and the, like all the buildings and air conditioners and roofs and all that stuff. So it's a really diverse kind of a position.
So Bob, I assume that schools will provide the flags?
Yes, they would, they would provide the flags.
I see he has nodding. Good. I don't see Jay's head nodding.
Yeah, he's nodding over there.
Good evening. So presently, our department routinely puts the flags up half-mast after we are notified routinely by police chief or we get notified by the city manager according to, you know, when it comes in from the state or from president's office to lower the flags and then re-raise the flags. I don't see a problem with however this body chooses to go forth. I, I would like to do some research about, because I know with certain poles, it's about wind load and weight. So we might have to be able to adjust the cables, might have to get new stuff to be able to hold that. I, I just don't know for sure. These, these flagpoles that are here on this campus have been here for a long, long time. It is a bigger mounting. I, I don't think it should be a problem, but I'd like to check that and make sure. Then another thing, I, I think I heard something was mentioned about putting another flagpole in. We can by all means do that if that is what is wanted or needed. We can look into that.
So you're going to look into how many flags you can fly on the?
Yeah, I, I don't know that off the top of my head. I mean, routinely, as Mr. Cobb stated, routinely, two to three max.
Two to three max.
Yeah. But, I mean, I, I'm not telling you, I mean, that could, that could be a possibility. It's just, we might have to put additional anchors on the roping system to be able to put additional flags up. It might be that easy. We just haven't done that in the past.
I, I, I don't know if I'm just making this up, but I've seen poles that, that did fly like several flags, but maybe they weren't that big. But if you're going to research it, then you...
Yeah, we can, we can do some research and make sure, yeah.
Thank you. Anybody else have any more questions for him before he runs out with his one-minute delay? All right. This is my, this is my suggestion that we do. We, we put two flagpoles inside the, the City Hall with Oviedo and the Hagerty flags and keep them there. And then on a, on a game day where both teams play, we can bring them out and put them on the flag, like Mr. Getty said, with the home team on top and the away team on the bottom. And, and, and fly them that way. But, but the, the onus on the notification needs to come from the schools. We don't want to, we don't want to get blamed for not putting the flags out on a certain time. So please, you know, we can, we can have some sort of communication from the schools to, to let us know and we could do that. Does that, and then the UCF flag will fly, will fly the way, way it's been flying so far. Does everybody think that's a, a good compromise? It will work?
Sounds like they'll be outside some of the time and I, as long as they catch the wind, I, I think that's kind of the idea. Catch the wind on days when our whole community's coming together for those games.
All right. Is everybody okay with that?
I don't know why we're having this. We should just do it.
Let's just do it. You've got your direction, I think.
Okay. And, and the additional flagpole, that's, it's, it's like $5,000 to put in an additional flagpole. That's, that's a little, a little much. So I think that this, this solution can, can work and still, you know, show, show the community support for the, for the teams.
Just have one question. It gets back to Councilmember Bodiford. On the game day of hometown showdown, we have home team on top, away team on second, in the middle, and then UCF below.
If they'll all fit.
Okay.
If they'll all fit. Are, you okay with that?
Well, Mr. Bullware's going to research, research how many can fit up there.
Right.
So whatever he researches and comes up with.
Okay. All right. Good?
All right, we're complicating this. Let's just go do it.
All right. Do you have the direction you need?
I'm good.
Perfect. Sounds good. All right. We're on to reports already. Mr. Cobb?
Actually, Deputy Mayor, I just have one thing. We'd like to have a work session with you next Monday. I, I know Councilman Bodiford can't, can't attend, but we, we've already making arrangements for me to get him up to speed. We have a number of items for you that are not budget-related that we need to get, have a discussion with you. One is our, our charter committee just finished its work and we want to bring the revisions to the, recommended revisions to you outside of a regular meeting so that you can have a, have a discussion on it. We're going to ask, I've asked Mr. Elkin to come in and make presentation to you. He did a wonderful job facilitating the committee and the committee did a wonderful job bringing forth recommendations. And so I wanted to get those to you. We plan to have you consider the ordinances. There's four of them. There's four ordinances in June. You'll have first reading and the first meeting in June, then second reading on June 17th. And that will keep us, actually, it will put us ahead of schedule. We had built in a, another second reading for July. So it will actually put us ahead of schedule in meeting the November election. We also, we've been working on some land development code amendments to allow, it's, it's, it's a light industrial use, but they're not really industrial, even though they're classified that way in commercial zones. A lot of them deal with 3D printing. A number of them are really professional office space, but in some cases, they do manufacture things. And so we're looking to bring them into commercial areas so that we can help to start fill up, filling up some of our vacant retail space that's been abandoned. some of our vacant retail space that's been abandoned. And that will bring in technical, high-paying jobs into those spaces. We're also looking at, there's, Mr. Boop wants to bring you a report about our garbage fees. We received notice from the county that they're increasing our tipping fees and so he wants to tell you the ramifications of that as well. I think that's it. There may be a fourth item, but maybe not. I know it's at least those three. So, but anyway, we'll have everything to you in a few days. So you'll have the time to review before the meeting.
All right, great, thank you. All right, Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. The city attorney's office doesn't have any report tonight.
Great, thank you. All right, the first council member is Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. There are many things I'd like to report on, but my time is limited. So I would just give a highlight on what has occurred during my last report. The American Legion Post 243 will host Florida's fallen tribute from May 23rd to June 4th from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. every day at the Oviedo Cemetery. The Legion will also host activities for Memorial Day, May 31st, at 11:00 a.m. at the Oviedo Cemetery. The guest speaker will be Amir Pishdod Jr., Lieutenant Commander, the U.S. Navy SEAL, retired. And if you would like to know what's going on in the local government, please sign up for the Oviedo in the newsletter. It is quite informative. And the last issue was an important message from Oviedo Police Chief Dale Coleman along with city events and much more. Are you aware that you can also sign up for a number of alerts such as boil water advisories and emergency alert notifications? The city staff keeps meticulous track of what's going on within the city and the alerts are invaluable. Also, do you know that the Oviedo Police Department has a number that you may call for non-emergency calls? That's 407-971-5700. At one time, Oviedo was a farming community. And although the heyday of that era is long gone, Big Daddy's Organic Farms is still upholding that tradition. It is a beautiful reminder that the soil here used to bring forth food for consumption for many parts of the USA. And thank you to the Oviedo Historical Society for their History at Home Oviedo series that they post usually on Facebook. I have been keeping track of many local organizations to educate and help victims of human trafficking. Love Missions, Pallet Coffee Brewery, and Bikers Against Human Trafficking. This past week, the Oviedo Police Department, along with many other law enforcement agencies, worked a special operation that netted ten arrests. Thank you to the Oviedo Police Department and you sent a good message. My thoughts and prayers are with the nation of Israel as they seek to protect and guard their citizens. If you didn't know, Israel is connected with the state of Florida by partnering with businesses and ventures with the state of Israel through Florida Israel Business Accelerator out of Tampa. I began my leadership Seminole class 30 in January 2021. The final class was Friday, May 14th. My graduation is on June 4th. We had a condensed version because the previous class was interrupted by COVID-19. Denise Ward and her helpers did a year's worth of events in two five months. We were introduced to all levels of government within Seminole County. Our last session on Friday, May 14th, included law enforcement and the courts. We were given a behind-the-scenes, sumptuous feast of what goes on behind the scenes to make what you see on a daily basis operate so smoothly. And that picture up there is the bike of one of our patrol officers, Officer Augustine. The men and women involved with ensuring your safety are your friends, relatives, and neighbors. They perform their jobs with the utmost of skill at times in placing their personal safety in jeopardy to safeguard our communities. The Sheriff of Seminole County, Sheriff Lima, and the heads of the police department and other municipalities, including our own police chief, sat on a panel and answered questions about how they perform their jobs. I am in awe and appreciative of their dedication to safeguarding our community. They, along with our Oviedo Fire and Rescue, make the city of Oviedo a place that many want to call home. And I salute you all, thank you for your service.
Thank you. Mayor Slade?
Well, I forgot to turn off the light, but let me show you what this thing does. This is a unicorn and it is a gift from Synapsory to our police department. They had their grand opening this morning. This is a new room that is over by the sanctuary inside a preschool. They're going to be opening up at no cost to residents of Oviedo starting in August. So if you know any specific needs, kids who would benefit from being in an environment that has a very soft floor, rolly slides, walls that you can pet, that sort of a thing, let's connect after this to make sure that the community knows about this opportunity, that it's free. I mean, I'm very impressed. But let me share with you a joke from this book because they are the worst dad jokes I've ever heard. So this is part, this little unicorn is part of a kit. And the idea is if a police officer goes into a situation where there is a specific needs adult or kid who may be, you know, kind of overloaded because that's a big thing if you encounter somebody you don't know sometimes. If they're just, you know, kind of out of control, if you hand this to them and, plugged it in, here we go. You can just hand it to them and they can hit it. And there have been studies done that if you bop something and it changes colors, that this is a very calming thing. So this is a tool that the police department can use. And they're also willing to help train our EMTs as well as all of our police officers just to have a little bit more awareness about, you know, how people may respond differently. So there's a few tools in the kit. If you could hold them up, we've got some of the scouts here demonstrating some of these other tools. So this kit's going to go over to Chief Coleman just a little bit here. And also, the chamber is having its trustee get together. We need two more people who are able to be there on June 9th after work hours. So I don't know who may be available. What day of the week is that? Let me see.
Is that the Wednesday event?
I think it's...
At Irish 31?
Yeah, Irish 31.
Yeah, I'm planning on going.
Okay, you going? All right.
Yeah, I can do it.
Okay, cool. So we've got you guys going and I'm going too. And last thing, on Memorial Day at sunset, 8:18. We don't have an official thing going on in the city of Oviedo. We have a virtual Memorial Day celebration. But at 8:18, there's going to be a trumpet player at the Veterans Memorial that's at Center Lake Park and then somebody on the hill on the other side. And I think they're going to be coming from Oviedo High School Band. But please try to make an effort to be there. If you have never seen our Veterans Memorial lit up at night, it is amazing. I'm hoping we're going to have all of our plaques unveiling the new residents who are veterans. We'll unveil those at that time or slightly before then. So just go look, they're in random order. It's not who served the longest or oldest, it's random. And the idea is if you served, you served. So thank you to the women and men who have served our country in the armed forces. Appreciate you guys. And that's all I've got. Oh, did I didn't do the joke? I mean, how can I follow, talk about tabs with a joke? What do monkeys wear when they are cooking? Aprons. It's so bad. Okay, I'll do one more. What kind of music do rabbits like? Hippity-hop.
All right. All right, next one to follow that up is Councilmember Britton.
Oh, man. Okay, well...
Come on, start with the joke.
Do a joke, do a joke.
I've got two things. One is a little bit more somber than the other, so I'll start with the first one is we had a great time at Bacon Bourbon &amp; Blues last week. I don't see Terry, but Drew told Terry we appreciate all her efforts. It was fun and it's starting to get us back to some sort of normal. And I think come October, when Oktoberfest comes, we're going to have a all-out, back-to-normal event. So looking forward to that. The second thing is I'm glad to see a lot of parents here, but my heart is a little bit saddened today because a young lady that we were acquainted with went to the restaurants with us, worked at one of the restaurants, was in a tragic accident Friday and was killed. And so I'm sitting here reflecting and seeing new parents and new kids. Count your blessings, folks. Hug your kids because you never know when something's going to happen. So appreciate what you have, count your blessings, and have a good life. So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. All right, on to my report. This Sunday at 1:00 p.m. over at the Aquatic Center, there's a Boy Scout, Lance Kochman. He's with Troop 787. He did an Eagle Scout project, put up some shelving and some stuff at the Aquatic Center. And he has a little plaque and he wants to dedicate it. So Coach Rose is going to be there and wanted to know if the rest of us could attend as well.
When is it?
It's going to be this Sunday at 1:00 p.m.
Right.
Okay. And I specifically, over at the Aquatic Center, I specifically asked for Sunday. Yes.
Thank you.
So that's, yeah, so I'll send out a reminder email, but I think that, you know, he's finished his Eagle project. He went through his border review, so we have another Eagle Scout in the city of Oviedo. So it's great. And so hopefully, we'll be doing the same thing for all of you one day as well. And then Bacon Bourbon &amp; Blues, it was a great event. It was nice seeing everybody there, you know, it had some normalcy to it again. And like Councilmember Britton said, hopefully, the next event for Oktoberfest is going to be kind of back to normal on our events and then ramp up the Parks and Rec staff to keep putting on some great events. Hopefully, we can get a bark and brew when it cools down a little bit. And we're going to have, we weren't able to do Fourth of July this year as much as we wanted to. It just wasn't going to be able to happen, but we're excited to see these events coming back and really enjoying them. My hats off to the Public Works Department with all the road paving. They actually did Waverly Woods. They're still finishing it up and it went off very smoothly as much as we thought that with all the vehicles parked in the roads that it was going to be difficult. It worked out really well and...
Bada bing for the very smoothly.
Yes. No, so it was great. And all the work that they've been doing around town with Mitchell Hammock and everywhere else, you know, we're able, you know, the budget turned out to be really well, it turned out well this year and we're able to do these improvements and work on our infrastructure. So we're moving along and that's all I had. Last person, Councilmember Butterford?
Last person, yes, thank you.
Save the best for last.
I appreciate that, I really do. So appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Great to see all the scouts here today. Great to see the Oviedo Athletic Department and also Mr. Getty. Thank you guys for coming in, appreciate that. Want to thank Chief Coleman and Stephanie Wilkins again for keeping up the 9:00 p.m. routine. So we just keep reinforcing that message. We haven't had a rash yet, so let's hope and knock on wood. And then I understand that our Officer K-9 Bailey is retiring. Will we do anything to recognize Bailey for... We'll do something in June for that? Okay, great. Great, now I guess you're in the works too, I guess, to get a replacement. Excellent, excellent. That's good. Also, to Parks and Rec that did a great job with the Bacon Bourbon &amp; Blues, it was well-run. I thought Terry and Drew did an excellent job of that. And congratulations to Councilman Smith on graduating from Seminole leadership. That's phenomenal, so, and that's all I had.
All right. Is there anything else for the good of the order? All right, on to future meeting dates. Monday, May 24th at 5:30 p.m., we have a work session. Monday, June 7th at 6:30, we have a regular session, which I will not be at. So, Madam Mayor, you'll have the chair. And Monday, June 21st at 5:30, there's a CRA governing board. June 21st at 6:30 will be a regular session. July 5th, there's no meeting for the Fourth of July holiday. And Monday, July 19th at 6:30, there'll be a regular session. And with that, meeting's adjourned.